We have to put this meeting as advertised somewhere.
Yes.
It's advert-- where is it advertised here at?
I don't know, the website.
It's on the website and Facebook and it's also under the hallway.
Right. You didn't put it in the newspapers at all?
The meeting?
The meeting? I don't believe so.
No, this is a regular meeting.
This is just a regular. This is a regular workshop. It's a workshop for the ordinance committee.
Right.
And it's a workshop for the planning board.
It's not a formal planning board. Actually, we're getting that it's not a formal planning board.
There's a formal planning board meeting directly after this at 6:00. And what?
Just to be clear, Tina Bedeese, motion to schedule a tentative planning board meeting, workshop, starting at 5:00 p.m., March 25th, 2025. David Waltz seconded the motion. Passed through all. Paul White abstaining. You know a planning board meeting. Never voted on.
Tentative. Tentative planning board?
Oh, the reason I abstained was that we weren't sure we were going to get information back from the attorney in time. But we have it now. We have it now. But we never voted formally to have a planning board meeting tonight, and so I'm not sure we could.
I can't do it because it's not a regular Tuesday night. I mean, it's not a usual second Tuesday.
Unless we advertised it as a planning board meeting, even if we didn't. Well, we had to have voted on it and properly advertise it. That's the only way to do it.
It's going to mess up our schedule with the ordinance review ordinances.
Yep. But the thing of it is, David, that the ordinance review committee is trying to have everything so tight that there's no room for wiggle room.
That's what it is, right?
And the town is trying to have protocol and procedures in place for all boards. So our regularly scheduled meeting is the second Tuesday of the month. If we wanted to have another special meeting, we'd have to do it, give seven days notification according to our bylaws.
Yep.
To have that meeting. But it was never voted on as a board.
Yep.
And it hasn't been advertised.
Yep, no, I understand.
So.
We can have a workshop because Tina made a motion and we voted on it.
Yep.
But if we didn't make a formal motion to have a planning board meeting and we didn't advertise it properly, then we probably can't do that.
So do we want to hold an additional meeting?
We can just have our meeting on... We weren't... If we had voted on anything, and if there was anything on the agenda that we needed to vote on as a planning board, we probably couldn't do that. We can certainly hold, you know, the regular workshop. In other words, was there any particular item you thought the planning board should vote on as a planning board tonight?
Yes.
What would that be?
The ordinance that was, if you look at this, Sebago Special Select Board meeting of the 10th.
Yeah.
We have all the recommended deadlines here. And on April 8th, the planning board is going to hold a public hearing, propose changes to the ordinances. This is the schedule that we were working off to get these ordinances to town reading.
That doesn't excuse...
Can mess us up a little bit.
But that doesn't excuse that we aren't following protocol.
I know. I know.
So we're having a regular planning board meeting on the 8th with a public hearing, proposed changes, and then that's when we're going to have a meeting will be held immediately following to discuss the proposed changes. So that may be when we need to formally vote to adopt or to recommend it to the selector.
So do we want to have an additional meeting next month on the 8th and then two weeks later have another meeting?
Well, according to what this says, recommended deadlines, today, final draft of ordinance changes, rewording changes, additions will be brought back to the planning board. But it doesn't say anything about a planning board meeting tonight. And it says April the 8th, planning board, which is a regular meeting, will hold a public hearing for proposed changes, and we should make sure that's properly advertised.
But we have to do that, Paul, at a regular meeting.
We have to do what at a regular meeting?
We have to vote to have a public hearing.
We never formally voted that to do that.
So you've got to do that at the...
All right, then we may not be able to do that.
So that's why I'm saying, do we want to hold, do we want to do that on the 8th and then have another meeting two weeks later for the public hearing?
Why not?
Well, we're already talking April 22nd, final proposed.
That would keep us in line with this.
Yeah. Otherwise, we're going to fall way behind and we don't get to that. Not going to get through it.
That may be what we need to do if we never voted to advertise the meeting.
Yep, right. And we'll do that at the 8th meeting on April 8th. We should vote to have a public hearing on April 8th, right?
That's fine. When do we have a meeting to be able to have?
So the...
To do the public hearing?
Two weeks after whatever the date is.
If you host April 8th meeting, schedule a public hearing for this, the earliest it could be would be April 22nd.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Or two weeks prior.
Yep.
Then at that meeting, hopefully, take public comment, there's no substantial changes, you could then pass it, make a determination, move it to the board of selectmen. Then they have on their agenda, day 6th, to review and determine whether to place it on the ballot.
Are you suggesting some meeting, when did you say in April?
Well, if you have your regular meeting on the 8th, at that time, you schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
As soon as you can, which would be April 22nd.
All right.
Go to this agenda. The only difficulty would be is if there's any changes substantive in public comment, you won't have time to adopt.
Yeah.
Get the minutes.
That's the risk. Thank you, the risk.
I want it back.
Okay, sounds good, Godwin.
All right. So write it down so we don't lose it.
It's all written down.
We don't have... All right.
So in other words, even though you've got, now you have, it's color coded, you have the revisions.
Yep.
And you have that information, so I think we just...
We can discuss those tonight.
Discuss them in a workshop.
That's what, yeah, that's what we need for.
Yep. And then you can go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you say that does, it is relevant that how would be between April the 22nd and May the 6th if we did get substantial changes based on public comments, so.
Because that doesn't...
Yeah, because if you do it on the 22nd, the board of selectmen have to do their public notification, so, right? All right, Paul, we can only do what we can do tonight, and we can't have a formal meeting because I don't believe we was properly advertised.
Well, that plus, under the, I think it was one of these documents you've got here too, I mean, zoning changes, I know the town has, but I think M&amp;A has two, right? Two notifications?
Yep, so the first one needs to be 14 days before the meeting, and then the second one needs to be seven days before the meeting.
So if we schedule it on the...
I think it's the other way around. First one has to be seven days, second one has to be 13 days, according to this timeline that you have given us.
I, so if you've got, I need a copy of calendars.
Yeah, so this says the notice must be posted in municipal office 13 days before the public hearing. So if you try to run this through the gauntlet here, if you have your meeting on the 8th, the next morning you post it for a public hearing, the notice must be published three times in the newspaper, the first date must be 12 days before the hearing, and the second must be seven days before the hearing.
That would also be why we can't have a planning board meeting because that standard wasn't meant for this meeting tonight.
Let me throw something else in that I found.
This is what was handed out to us. You said the first one's seven days, the second one's 13 days. It would make sense. It doesn't make sense.
I don't know what that is or if it's got a seal on it. This is what we were given.
The next, this document you looked at.
No, that's, did you get my copy of this one? Did you want me to get this one?
This just says 13 days, which is the, in other words, 13 and 12. Well, okay, hold on a second.
Okay, Dave. And looking up state statutes, okay, in Maine, public hearing notifications must be published in newspapers with general circulation in the municipality or area affected, typically 17 to 24 days before the hearing, and must include the time, place, and purpose of the hearing. In Sebago, Maine, while bylaws can outline specific notification procedures for public hearings, they must not contradict or be less stringent than state law.
But where'd you get that from?
State website.
24 days?
17 to 24 days.
I have known no town that's done that.
I don't care what every town's doing, it's a state statute.
This is the one that was provided by the town attorney. This state statute that's...
Okay, this is just one that we were...
So Dave, this is consistent, because what this is saying, it's got to be posted. The document that you provided from our attorney also says the notice must be posted to the municipal office at least 13 days before the hearing. This document you handed me says the notice of public hearing must be posted at least 13 days before the hearing.
That's the second, that's, the first one says talks about the proposed ordinance change, right? The seven day one? See it up at the top? I don't know, that's what we were given.
There.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question. So I know I've read that the agenda has to be posted 14 days before the meeting. So is that part of the criteria that's in there as well?
You've got so many conflicting data.
Was 14 days, and that was on the state website as well. And we always, always followed the 14 days as a planning board.
Always by two weeks?
Yep.
Always?
I know Desiree used to, do you remember, Desiree used to ban me, like, oh my God, you have to hit this date because we need the 14 days and it has to be out there.
It's another one of those, it's another one of those things that's not in our ordinance.
Well, it's a standard.
But it should be, we should have that in the ordinance.
We should be following the standard.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, so I guess the bottom line is...
I've never known it to be other than that standard to review.
And you've been on the planning board how long?
So if you do, so this is where it gets dicey here because I don't see how, if you hold a meeting on the 8th, you have to have the notice posted, you'd have to have the notice posted before you had the hearing.
Yep. Yep. That's the problem. Waltz and I were just talking about this.
But, fair again, this is what was handed to us, that's highlighted, is state law.
Yep.
And that says 13 days.
Well, regardless if it's 13 or 14, if the criteria wasn't met.
For this one?
Yep.
I'm talking about going forward.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment.
I'm just trying to figure how we get, so I'm just trying to figure how we get this going forward.
I know, I sent an email to Michael with that.
13 to 14 days of every challenge.
If you make a motion on a meeting at the 8th, then we can do it on the 1st of May to meet the deadlines and to also meet the registered news submission dates.
But how does that match into the board of selectmen's need?
I think they would, we would just have to have you kind of...
Do they have, does the board of selectmen have to do the same public procedure?
We don't have to do the same thing.
No, I think for a sudden.
Well, they come to our meeting.
I think they need to finalize their process 45 days prior to the town meeting.
But we have a workshop on the 1st.
Yeah, we have a first select board.
The planning board only meeting once a month? Or twice a month?
Big now, they need one a month now. Well, they've always been, right?
That's a good question. My favorite is that of workshops.
Yep. All right.
We're going to have to do...
Open the workshops.
Yep.
5:25.
So... The ordinance review committee and the planning board?
Yep. Do you want to sit up and assist in showing the ordinance? Are you committing?
I'm good. I'm good sitting here. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, well, we'll start with...
The purpose of the workshop really is to go through the draft ordinances from the attorneys and see if we have any questions or comments or editorial updates.
Which one are we starting with?
Let's start with...
Just go pink.
One first on the list, which is amendments to the Shoreland zoning ordinance, status paper.
So which color is that?
It's green.
Green. I don't want to go by...
I'm colorblind.
Oh, jeez, that doesn't help.
So, yeah.
Here, I thought we were doing a good thing in Chairman's colorblind.
The change is structures accessory to allow uses, including accessory apartments. And the change is in the living residential from CEO to the planning board.
What was the reasoning for that?
That's the paper one, land use and shoreland zone.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what was the reasoning behind changing it to the planning board?
I think it was just to simplify.
Actually, what our discussion was about, I think on that was simply that this is around the shoreline.
Yep.
And we're thinking, because we have a lot of density in the shoreline area, that we as a planning board should be looking to those.
Okay.
That's the rationale behind it.
Thank you. And this is my ordinance. What are the numbers after like, the first time I see a number?
I see it, the number 10.
Those, if you look, if you look in the ordinance book, those numbers...
Those are notes that pertain to that particular use, that table. So if you go to the table in your ordinance of the shoreland zoning, there's a list of notes that goes, revisions or conditions that go with that use.
Like I said, it was my ordinance.
This is all.
SP.
This is short, limited shore.
RP, LR.
Stream protection, resource protection, and...
Limited residential.
So they don't do village anymore?
Not in shoreline.
Why were they updated?
Yeah, when was that changed?
Those are your shoreland zones.
Yeah, these are totally, these are just in shoreland zoning.
So this doesn't include the rural areas?
Not at all, this is just shoreline zone.
Okay, thank you.
And what's RP, residential?
What's that?
Resource protection. But when was that changed?
This is limited to shoreland zoning, it's not part of our regular...
Right, it's not the land use or anything.
Yeah, not the regular ordinance, but this is a special ordinance.
Can you say with the LR and the SPR?
LR is limited residential. SP is stream protection.
Is what?
Stream protection. And RP is resource protection.
Stream or stream?
Stream, stream. Row rowing your boat downstream.
Okay, thank you.
The only one that's changing is the limited residential.
Yep, that's it.
What are the numbers for? What's like it says CEO 11?
Did you go over the shoreland zoning ordinance?
So it connects to the thing?
Underneath the uses, there's a bunch of notes and conditions that go to with these, so that references, you'd have to see those notes to reference what it means. Usually they're smaller, but I think just the way it printed out.
I don't have a clue. No, I have no clue. I'm okay with that one.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Very straightforward.
Yep. Okay. So then we move on to financial guarantee.
Financial guarantee, first.
And the change to that is, it said the planning board may require the applicant to show financial capacity, and so we're changing the planning board may to the planning board shall require the applicant to show financial capacity. And that's, again, just a one-way change. That's section 7, side plan review.
I don't see any problems with that. I don't have any trouble with it.
Simplifies it for us and gets us out of the situation of, it's often a difficult situation about asking persons about their financial resources. That way it takes the judgment really away and requires it as part of the thing to do so. You know, if you don't get in a situation because of two ways, you really have to hold them to prove they can do it.
All right, so everybody good with that change, Doug?
I have one small question about that. I'm not sure which is correct, the eight or the nine.
Yeah.
When I look it up in my books, it should be the nine and not the eight that the attorneys shifted it to.
Well, we've been moving things around and they...
Yeah, it might be that I'm missing, I went back and looked at some of the new ordinances and didn't find where we shifted any of those numbers.
No, I have nine, I have nine of mine.
You have nine as well, huh?
Yeah, but I mean, we can ask them.
That's a simple change.
It's a simple change. The article is not going to change anything.
Okay, I think that's one area at least that we have a shift.
So how do you, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I come in front of the planning board, one of those six lot subdivisions down the street. What's the process?
Financial capacities?
Yes. I think you guys should think about, I mean, you want to have that figured out before somebody comes in front of you, and you all look at each other like, do you have that, like?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance?
Yeah, if you read the entire ordinance, it's the planning board, we're going to change it to planning board shall require the applicant to show financial capacity to complete the developments as approved and may require posting prior to final approval of any plan of a bond, letter of credit, or escrow agreement in such amount as is approved by the board as being reasonably necessary to ensure completion of all improvements required as conditions of approval of such plan in such form as approved by the planning board. That's what the ordinance reads.
So Andrew, let me throw a scenario at you if you don't mind. So if you had a subdivision off an existing road, you had no infrastructure that you had to do through subdivision, then in that case, the board could waive that financial capacity because obviously you have no investment into infrastructure. But if you were developing a road or you had to do drainage improvements, those types of things could be the things that the board would want to see, that you have financial capacity to build those things. Okay, so like a reclamation law? Yeah. Exactly. To cover in the event that you didn't finish. We made a mess, so we're going to clean it up. Exactly.
Well, recently an applicant had to withdraw because of that, and maybe if we didn't inquire, we might have made it, or at least made it clarify the situation before we went ahead and did the action on the thing.
Okay.
So David, as suggestion, since he's looking for the original ordinance, it may be helpful to attach that as the original so they can refer back to that with this update. Not everybody knows the ordinance is up the top of their head, so I think a suggestion is to put the ordinance there and what you're amending, and then put this with that, just so it's got all the information.
Yep. It's just a one-way change, but yeah.
No, I get it, but people are going to ask the questions if you already have the documentation, it would be helpful.
Yep, that's a good idea.
So in other words, the ordinance, the process of getting approval and how this fits.
Somebody hand on the ordinance as well, right?
And just the original ordinance and the proposed change. One on top, the overlay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I ask a, can I, Jim, can I ask a question about this one? The, the, is it in other areas, like, I don't know, Naples or Spanish, are they working under the same proposed, like, we're doing here within, like, the structures of including, like, accessory apartments? Are they working with the planning boards already, or are they currently still with their CEOs? Are other towns?
I think many of the accessory apartments are going through the CEOs.
So they're all going through the CEO?
Some towns, I can't confirm, I think some towns have just banned them in the shoreline zone or made them so difficult that, in other words, you'd have to have, you can do, some towns are allowed to do them in the shoreline zone, but it counts as its own dwelling. So in other words, you've got to have twice the area to put it in.
Twice the land mass.
Twice the land mass, correct, yes.
I was just curious.
This has been, it's been, it's been an issue because all the towns, unfortunately, have adopted kind of different regulations around accessory apartments. There's been no consistency at all with that. And so due to the guidance from the state, and I think a lot of it has to do with every town set its independent legal firms looking at this and giving them guidance, so they're all a little bit different.
What does the state go on, if you don't want, I mean, has that been challenged to the state?
As far as I know, it has not been challenged upstate. It's a brand new law. I know that there's, I think there's a lot of attorneys still working on some of the holes in it.
So interesting, if some of these smaller grandfathered lots down by the lake, we could lend it to single family if they didn't, if we had an ordinary, the guy in square footage.
Right, like I said, a lot of towns are saying.
Imagine the figure of 200 square footage at some point in time, David, as being part of the state standard. 20,000 or whatever it was.
Was it discussed to not allow accessory apartments in the shoreline?
We had long discussions about it, but we found ourselves up against the state duplex law. And this is some...
The LD 2003 and what was it?
I didn't, I didn't want to say.
I'm sorry, no, I was going back to the LD 2003. So are the other towns that are banning them, binding they up lawsuits or...
I don't think it's proceeded far enough along yet for towns to get into that. I don't think anybody's challenged it as far as I'm aware of, but it's been conflicting information from the state.
The ADU law doesn't really apply within shoreline zone.
Right.
And they still have to meet those law standards for a second.
But towns have taken different approaches on how they do that.
So, but we could in fact adopt lot size standards that would correct the preparation of the property.
You could make it so that it's a shoreline zone based on dwelling at first as lots.
All right, well, thank you for that.
So we'll move on to our third ordinance, which is administration ordinance, section 7, side candidate view. Bob would speak to this.
This is the one with the most lines through. Much of this is updated to our current language, essentially, that we use during our process of approving applications. And so that's kind of what we see here in terms of planning board completion of application determination. The language has shifted, just to make it consistent with what we're working with today.
I have a question. Down, hard to see this, at the bottom of that writing, come up from the bottom, and it's right under the first underlined blue, where it says at the completeness of application meeting.
Yeah.
It says the planning board shall provide the public an opportunity to comment on whether or not the application is complete. Now, I can see having the public have an opportunity to comment on the project, but where do they have the knowledge as to whether a project, the application, is complete or not? They don't.
This is already in our ordinance.
That's already in our ordinance.
But I'm saying to you, you guys can change things as we go along here. You see what I'm saying? What knowledge does the public, Joe Schmo, have for sitting in, he doesn't like his neighbor? So therefore, he's going to say...
Yeah, you make sense to him on that one. I wouldn't know.
Most people wouldn't. We do on a planning board, we have to deal with it all the time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, you have the opportunity to review all of the application, members of the public do. So I would assume if the, if members of the public review the application, that they might have some questions.
They have a right to comment on the project and the application, but they do not have the right, the knowledge, to say... but they do not have the right, the knowledge, to say that that application is complete. That's our job.
That's right. That's true, but they do have, they can comment.
They can comment, but there should be to, the opportunity to comment on the project, period.
So your recommendation is to eliminate is complete?
Yes, to determine whether or not the application is complete.
It was pre-existent.
Yeah.
I believe it as it is. And the fact that they can comment, they can comment on anything, I guess, they make still... It was still up to us to decide ultimately whether...
Paul's comment, now somebody could still say, "You shouldn't accept as it's not complete in a general comment."
They can make it as a general comment, but they should not be able to determine whether that application is complete officially.
Say they were represented by someone who...
They're not determining, they're just making comments.
They're making comments. I don't think you, I think you should have this information and that information, isn't it?
The public doesn't determine, the public only can comment.
If they commented that, you know, we should get some information, it might be perfectly logical and reasonable thing, so...
I'm not reading it that way. It shall provide the public an opportunity to comment on whether or not the application is complete.
Doesn't say they can vote, it just says they can know.
They what?
It doesn't say they can vote, it just says they can comment.
It's a completeness, it's a...
Pre-application for your...
It's a completeness hearing, so I mean, I think it was...
Pre-application meeting, public hearing thing, what do you call that?
Yeah, pre-application meeting.
Well, pre-application meeting, but then for major projects, you have another meeting.
Completeness of application.
Yeah, completeness of application.
Completeness of application.
Completeness, that, isn't that like a quasi-public hearing?
That's where the public can comment on whether or not they think the application is complete.
Well, the CEO has already said it's complete. The town planner has already said it's complete.
The board is ultimate. We recommend to the board that it's complete. You have to make the determination.
All right, now, the public, I can see commenting on the project, but not on the completeness of it because if you two have suggested that it's complete...
I agree, Tina. I wouldn't even see why you're talking about an application in a meeting if it's not being completed prior to the meeting.
That's right.
That's my opinion.
Well, it has to do with timelines and what regulations you hold that project to.
Well, that's already been determined by its complete, by the suggestions from the CEO and the...
But it's not formal, so it goes to the planning board. The planning board has the final say. So what happens is we come to that meeting, we say, "We think it's complete." She'll say, "I think it's complete." You have to make the determination and you do so after hearing from the public.
But I'm not going to give...
And the reason that that's done, the reason that you need the completeness is that sets into place all the ordinances and everything that that project has to uphold to. And I think this may have come from a previous application.
I understand all of that. I understand all of that.
But it locks in place. Now it's deemed complete. All your processes are now locked in.
We've changed now the way we did things to have, before we were just having a meeting, we do the application and then we move on to later meetings for other things. Now we have pre-application meeting, which is one we put in place. And at that meeting, the only thing that's being discussed is the application. I mean, you know, the...
We have an application submission.
And that's it. And then, so the only thing that anybody could comment on that would be whether the application was complete. Now, what if, say some member of the public says, "I believe you might need X information to have a complete application." That would be a perfectly rational thing to comment on.
That's just a pre-application meeting. The public isn't involved in that.
You can take, you can still take public comment if you want.
Why would it not say the planning board, let me have it in place, "The planning board shall provide the public an opportunity to comment and then the planning board would make the determination if the application is complete."
And finally, they would...
Yes.
Prior to making a completeness determination on a project classified as a major project, the planning board shall provide the public an opportunity to comment on whether or not the application is complete. That's for major development, major cyclical review.
The sentence we're discussing, I don't think is correct. I think the planning board would take comments from the public.
Is this from my end?
And then listen, and then you guys would determine if it's complete.
Only you.
Not the public.
Okay.
Where is the major one?
Yeah, so the order of things is pre-application, application submission, planning board, completeness determination, vote to commit substantive review, public hearing, that's if, that's if it's a major.
But I think that sentence has to be...
Go through that again.
Say it again.
Do that one more time.
That might want to say major, sure.
No, I think you need to start with that one sentence we're talking about and not jump to the other things. That sentence is not correct. The public does not make the determination if the application is complete. You take the comments from the public and then the planning board makes that decision. So I think that sentence needs to be corrected and then I think we could move on to the other items that you're reading off, Dave.
Give him that sentence again.
One of each meeting.
You want me to say that sentence again?
Yes, let me send her a sentence.
Well, this is for major development.
No, we're not talking about major.
That's the only one that I, that's where I was getting that from.
You're talking, Tina, you're talking down below, correct?
Yes.
All right, so that's not major.
No.
All right, just want to make sure I understand.
Yep. So you're suggesting that after, we stop the sentence after a comment. So, "The planning board shall provide the public an opportunity to comment..."
On the project.
And take the rest of that sentence out.
We're down here. Yeah, I think it should say, "The planning board shall allow the public comments and the planning board would then determine if the application is complete." It locks the sentence. The planning board determines if the application is complete versus not complete. An opportunity to comment. Yeah. And then get rid of this. On whether or not... Well, on whether or not the application is complete. Right. Get rid of that. And then would you say? Oh, no, you can, yeah, it would be that they allow them to comment and that's it. Planning board would make that decision if it were complete.
And then the planning board will determine completeness.
Yeah. And then you'd move on to if you said it was not complete. So basically you're removing this. Just basically the public has no say. It's you guys that have the say.
That's right.
So that's what she's saying to remove, like the line in the word. So just like uncomment, period. And then if the planning board decides, so you get rid of those...
Whether or not.
Whether or not.
Yep, it's complete. Yeah, I got that.
Okay, got it?
I think that's it.
I think that's what I...
So you want to get rid of, basically, you need to get rid of whether or not. Oh, you could, yeah, it's five words.
That's exactly right. You're just, yes, Jim. All right.
The same intent, just different...
That makes sense.
But I think it clarifies...
It clarifies, yeah, they're not giving them the right to determine, but they just get a right to comment on the application.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Might be.
We're going to cross that. We're crossing.
Is the state of Maine trying to streamline this process for local communities?
It's left up to local.
Okay, I remember hearing something about a while back that, I don't want to see.
All towns have different processes.
Okay, the other change... On the, let's see, where are we at here? Under GA 3.
Say that again.
Another change under GA 3, it's on the second page.
On the public hearing.
What we did was, we initially had in three, it used to say, names and addresses of all abutting and nearby property owners within the following distances of the property lines is listed in the property tax records of the town of Sebago and is listed in the property tax records of other towns where the project abuts lands not in Sebago. We have taken that last section out, so it ends at Sebago. So you don't see anything after Sebago in your new documents.
What about, well, just going in order, what about number five, public hearings? There's changes there, right?
Yes, there are changes there as well, sorry, yes.
Yeah, so that's a change. When a public hearing is placed on an agenda of a planning board meeting, the town at the applicant's expense, instead of, when the applicant is asked, the town at the applicant's expense is added in.
So the town preparing, so to clarify, the town is preparing the notices the applicants paid for them.
Right.
And the town sending them out.
Just so people are clear.
And the town is sending them out, correct?
The town is sending them out.
Yeah, so it's...
The applicant's just paying for it.
All right, now again, public notice is 14 days.
Right, yes, I agree with that. And those...
And then the, at least, the ordinance used to read, at least 10 days prior to a public hearing. We've changed to 10 days to 14 days.
Is that going to hold according to state statute?
The attorney's left with this, right?
Yeah, attorney's left with it.
14 days is pretty consistent.
The thing of it is, Jim, is that everybody's being so DMPTU and it's got to be this, 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 and this. And then we're saying, "I'm telling you what the state statute is," and you say, "Well, it's pretty consistent amongst the towns." I mean, either...
I don't know, I apologize, I mean, because we do have the state statute.
I have no trouble with 14. I'm just saying, are we in line with what we're supposed to do?
It's what it said, 10 business days, and we changed it to 14 days.
Right, yep.
Where in the state was it 10 days?
I think it said 10 business days. I don't have it.
Oh, no, no, okay, 10 business days, which would therefore count for 14 days.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That goes out.
If my memory serves me wrong, I think that's...
That's always an issue in ordinances because it lacks... I always like to have the term calendar days put in there, just so it's clear.
So it's clear, that's right. Then it makes sense.
That's a real difference, business days or calendar days or...
It makes a difference because generally 10 business days amounts to...
14 days.
14 days unless you have a holiday.
Yeah.
So it's messy about that.
So that's why I think you have, I would recommend after 14 in blue, you have calendar, just to be clear.
Oh, I thought it was in there.
Is it calendar or business?
Should be calendar.
It should be calendar.
The town only has four business days, right?
Doesn't, put any aside.
Just want to go calendar. You go calendar, you eliminate all that confusion.
Yeah, I got it.
One other change in that ordinance was on...
There's another one. You've got to scratch applicant, where it says, "The applicant shall also cause notice of public hearing to be published." It's going to be changed, the applicant's going to be scratched, it's going to be the town. "The town shall also cause notice of the public hearing to be published." And then it goes on to say, "In," it used to be "the," and that's scratched, to say, "two local newspapers of general circulation." And then "periodicals" is scratched and in place is put, "which newspapers will be determined by the planning board." And "Bridgestone News" is scratched. And then it goes on to say, "At least seven business days prior to the hearing, at the applicant's expense, all the butters and public notification shall contain map and lot number, physical address, and a description of the project." Then it goes on to say, "The town clerk is scratched," and it just says, "The town shall post a notice of the public hearing on the town's website at least seven days prior to the hearing." And then it goes on to say, "The town applicant is scratched." It goes on to say, "The town shall provide evidence to the planning board that the required notices have been mailed and that the required notice has been published." And "the" is scratched, "Bridgestone News" is scratched and it says, in place of that, it says, "Two newspapers of general circulation." "Local periodicals" is scratched.
But shouldn't the same requirement for posting on the website be the same as the posting on the newspapers? Shouldn't that be 14 as well?
That's what I was going to say. Those should be consistent. One is 14 days and one is seven.
So you're saying they should be consistent?
They should be consistent, 14 days.
Yeah, and for some reason in the past, that's been, I can't explain why it was separated.
Well, we're going to change that.
It's been in our ordinance as long as I can.
But I mean...
Make it consistent so that people aren't questioning one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, if you got the notices you're sending to the butters, then you obviously know it's going to be a public hearing and you've got it written, it should take two seconds to post it on the website.
Yeah.
And then if you miss the deadline for the paper, I mean, they only come out in certain days.
Well, that was going to be my comment, is I think for the board's understanding, it would be helpful if we knew the dates because when you're trying to schedule hearings and things like that, it's important to know that just because you think it can be published in 14 days, it actually has to be in the paper before that to make that 14-day posting. So it'd be important to have the dates of when, the date before the 14 days, when the post, when the newspaper actually needs that information because it could be...
Well, the problem you're going to run into is you have a meeting on Tuesday, the town is open on Wednesday, so that's going to, you can't post it publicly and that's going to push you up to 15 to 16 days anyway.
Right, but I'm just saying...
I'm not trying to change them.
No, but I'm just saying, so if you had to put in the newspaper 14 days in advance, you can't come in on day 50 and give it to the newspaper to put it in the next day. You've got to have it in a week before, depending on the newspaper, a certain number of days before it gets posted. It'd be helpful for the board to have those newspaper posting days so that when you're scheduling, you can do that to cover, make sure you hit the date you need to.
All right, so we're talking about shifting that from seven to 14 calendar days.
Both, right.
Both the same, okay.
What was it in our, in that last meeting, I think when we talked about having, the planning board needed to have everything in like 20-some-odd days prior to...
28 days prior, so you had 14 days to review it.
Okay, so that would give us the time for the 14 days.
Right, yeah.
So if we put 14 in there...
Yeah, when everything's 14.
Simplify.
No, I agree because it does get confusing.
It's like everything's the same.
Yep.
There's one other change on the back page of that. Distance for notifications.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the 500 feet is changed to 1,000 feet, so in all districts, 500 is scratched and 1,000 takes its place, 1,000 feet including the butters and owners of land across streets, roads, and right of way.
So you're putting the compass down at the 500-foot radius and spinning it.
So does that apply just to major subdivisions?
Yes, yep.
In name...
What is it, the minor? 150 feet.
Well, it's on 150 feet for village.
250 for residential and 500...
250 for rural.
Yep, and 500 for rural.
Yep, and 500 for rural district.
Yep.
So why...
Why in all districts?
Yeah, why in all districts? Why don't you say for major subdivisions and major developments, subdivisions, 500-foot notification? Why in all districts? Just if it qualifies for major, 1,000 feet's big, if you're doing something in the village, you're going to be...
A lot of people, yeah.
A lot of people.
That's a lot. Is there, did the 1,000 feet, was that a...
That didn't come from us, actually came from the attorneys. And I think what influenced it honestly is that, you know, we've been, we had been asking for and folks have been talking about how many people we send notices to essentially and how do we be a better neighbor than we've been in the past in some cases? That's what this all came from. And I think, and I think they adapted that to try and increase our reach. That's a lot of reach though.
They don't, they're in Sebago.
Yeah.
What classifies, it says many developments and subdivisions... What classifies, it says, "minor developments and subdivisions with four or fewer lots." Okay, if I have one lot and I'm building a house, are you saying I fall into this?
No, it's a minor.
For major developments, subdivision with five or more.
I was saying, look at the minor.
Minor would be four or less.
Okay, well, one is less than four.
Right, so it's a minor.
Okay, so do I have to follow, if I build a house, I have to.
Single families are exempt. Single families don't come to the board. It's only if you have a subdivision, if it qualifies as a subdivision, you have to.
I think something needs to be clarified there.
In all districts isn't right.
What?
A one-home lot would not be a subdivision.
One-home lot's a single family, we don't review those.
Then should it say, should it say, they say two to four lots? I mean, one is not subdivision, you're saying, so should it say two to four?
Sometimes two's not, depending on the city on the open.
All right, is there a place in any one of our three village districts where you could have a major subdivision? I don't think so.
You'd have to have a massively large parcel.
What I'm seeing is, okay, the lawyers, the lawyers wrote this, but the lawyers aren't here to see what we're dealing with. So it should not be all districts.
Well, the village district goes down, what, well, it's a bit down Long Hill Road ways, doesn't it?
We're sitting in the village district.
What was that?
We're sitting in the village district.
Yeah, but even here, yeah.
Is, is there any areas that are large enough to put a subdivision in?
I don't know what they did with a map, so I can't tell you that.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Yeah.
There's a map hanging on the wall that showed all the.
I'll look it up, I'll find it.
Ethan.
I'll find it.
Okay. So the three villages, there are three village areas.
Long Beach, it's Nathan's Beach.
It's up Kibble Car Road a little ways.
Anywhere else, Paul, you think of?
There are, I think, three village districts here, in Long, Svego, and, you know, Long Beach, Svego, down there. And then there's rural residential, which is between here and.
There.
There. And then there's rural residential up along the ridge towards, uh, DB Park Road. The rest of it is rural. So we used to have a nice map.
I know, just in general conversation, the DP has adopted this one thousand feet for some of its permits, and it has faced scrutiny from the public.
Okay.
So, um, just because of the, one, it's the cost of notification.
It's like a lot of people.
Is that a thousand feet from, for instance, here, a thousand feet that way, here, a thousand feet that way? It's a thousand feet from the property line. Thousand feet from the property line of the project.
From the property line, not the seller, he's the property.
You could be going. You could be doing a half mile in some cases.
Exactly.
So that's gonna change.
I think we got it.
You wanna scratch it?
Yeah.
Back to five hundred. Yeah, back to five hundred. Yeah, okay, we'll put it back to five hundred then.
So that change is being eliminated?
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, is that thousands foot number, is that part of Dave McCarthy's idea to notify other towns?
No, that one thousand, no.
Lawyers decided they didn't think that was a good idea, figured, but you didn't have another idea about notifying people on dead-end roads, has that still been included?
That's not included, but what we, what we talked about was, and Michael was there as well, as, in terms of being a good neighbor, to make it one of our practices that if we as a planning board, um, think we should extend beyond that, we could do that. And we would do it not with, we could do it with simple mail, we could do it with any means we wanted to do that, just as a way to reach out even further. So for instance, Dave was really worried about dead-end roads and easement roads and those kinds of things. And that way, if we have an easement road that's got, that goes well beyond the five hundred foot mark we have here, and the actual project that's on would affect them in some financial way, or some way or other, we could reach out to them in another way, directly from the planning board.
Dead-end roads?
Yep.
See, now, I think that would, that would go over better than, we gotta write in the ordinance.
Right, right.
It's a good neighbor policy, we're communicating with you to let you know, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, 'cause you can have a dead-end road as much as two thousand feet, you know.
Right. I've got one other thing on the second page, and it's just a typo.
Oh, good.
The bottom line, it says where the project abuts, you've got A-B-U-T-S. I think a but is two T's.
I've seen that written several different ways.
I've seen, yeah.
But you've got a but in there for.
You spell checked on that.
You've got a but in a different place in here, and it's a two T's.
I don't think it's two T's, I think it's supposed to be one.
No.
She's got something, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, spell check it, somebody spell checked it.
Oh, well, that's coming out anyway. That whole last line, the whole blue line is coming out of there anyway.
Oh, all right.
But that's true, it's a good point, though, because I've seen it several different spell.
You've got a buts in here with the two T's. So we already used it once, Jim, the two T's.
We've used up all T's.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Okay.
I think.
It's on there, okay? All square?
Square.
Two T's?
Two T's.
Is that in Webster's dictionary or?
No, it gave me the definition of it, though.
Okay.
It's one of those words that, you know, oops, I didn't.
Two T's, all right.
Words that they hate.
As a teacher, they brought those with two T's.
All right.
Okay, so.
All right.
On the next one, we have.
O'Gallan?
Yeah, this is the fourth one.
He doesn't know what color it is, and it's a different shade.
You didn't show that zone before.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is section four, scheduling uses, scheduling uses table.
Before we start, could I ask, where in God's name did you get the list of things for uses? Did you look it up somewhere? Did you copy it for Svego town?
This is in our ordinance now.
This is in our ordinance.
Which one?
Land use.
From the old.
Section four, scheduling uses.
The ones that we've always been using?
Yes.
We're talking about hospitals?
Yes, that's always been in our ordinance.
All of this stuff is there. Everything you're looking at is in our ordinance, except for you see corrections.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what's in our.
But it was one, was it one you revised?
No.
No, no. The only, the only one we're revising is, is under residential uses, number seven, accessory apartments. It used to read that accessory apartments were all under the planning board's purview, and we're changing.
It's the CEO.
That to CEO for rural residential and rural districts. That's it.
And why is, why is home occupation, what does that mean, a business?
No, 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 we're not changing that, that's.
No, no, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait a minute. What does home occupation mean, please?
You have a business in your.
Business in your home house.
Okay, all right. I was thinking occupation, and I'm wanting that.
We do review those, yeah.
Yeah, okay, no.
Yeah, so, so that's on page two, and as I said, it's residential uses, accessory apartments.
So just for clarity, then I came up on the other one, I don't know, I'll ask people in the audience, I mean, where some of these have nope numbers next to them, do you want to see at least at the end of this, what those numbers mean? Does that have a bearing on anybody? I mean, we're not changing any of them, but if we did, like.
No, because it says.
If you have things in there that aren't explained, I think you need to note what they are.
Well, we're not changing them, but I guess it's just, to your point, the public's looking at this, and so, like in the other one, in the green section there, you had thirteen or fourteen numbers, and in this one, I think you've got, I saw one somewhere in here. Maybe I didn't, maybe I'm seeing things.
Yeah, there are in this one, it's under, on page, where was it, page three, commercial mineral extraction. Normal uses, number eight, number nine.
Yeah, those notes, you know, it wouldn't take much to put those at the end and just list them, so.
Yeah.
So that people can see, because it's part of that section of the ordinance that you're changing. We're not changing any of those numbers, but I think it's just to be consistent so people understand what the relation is.
I've never seen this list. Have you, Paul? This list of uses?
It's in our.
The old ones?
It's on the first page.
Yeah, okay, I've never, I've never tried this.
Which one now?
There should be yes.
This is for instance, on the first page, you've got BB, for instance, line number three on the first page. Y is yes.
What is Y?
Y is yes allowed. Okay, thank you.
It's going more than that. It's allowed without.
Right, it's allowed without a permit. And that is also explained, I think in the beginning. So that it should be, most towns do.
No approval required.
The only thing being changed today, a proposal to be changed, is the one about accessory apartments, residential uses, number seven, and that would take it from a planning board, need to go before the planning board and allow the CEO to issue the permit.
If you go to the beginning of, sorry, if you go to the beginning of section four, it tells you what those symbols.
Yeah, yeah.
So just pull them up.
But it may be helpful where we're listing them to include that table is all I'm saying.
This is what we do on a rainy day.
Are you saying, Jim, that it'd be helpful to take these since you're handing this out and have a little table that shows you what each of those.
Yeah, take this, take that symbol schedule, that's in section B, and then also the number one that's under the shoreline, just so people can have a correlation. Not that we're changing them, but it's just, they help people understand that, um, if we're confused with this kind of stuff.
We could talk about much of this.
One, two, three, seven.
On the foot.
So we're only looking at accessory apartments, we'll change on this table, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Wait a minute.
Christina mentioned something that, that the new state law, you say, doesn't apply to shoreline zone.
And two hundred and fifty feet of water, they still need to have enough road frontage and enough lot.
Area.
Area for two dwellings based on what's in their district.
They don't get that bonus, basically, they do with other lots, they have to stand on their own in shoreline zone.
They have to meet the, the other. And then we might have some in other zones, we, some square footage requirements that might help us provide, prevent too closely packed, uh, duplexes on too small a lot. That's not.
You get into plumbing code and different things like that, too.
All right, I just don't want to get too far off.
David, on each four.
Each four, okay, yeah.
Under industrial use, number seven, there's nothing there. It's blank all the way across for the three districts. Does that mean it doesn't apply?
That's just a tabletop, so.
Yeah, but they should, everything else is the planning board.
You look at the uses underneath it, that's just segregating there, that's just.
Seven, eight, seven, B, seven, C.
That's just a head.
Oh, all right, okay, okay, got it, got it, got it.
I have a question. Being that we're looking at land use, things did we not, did we choose against, just saying no to cement plants and paving plants?
We're not there yet.
It's not even there yet.
We're not there yet, we haven't, that ordinance hasn't gone with the attorney yet.
Okay, I was just, land use, sure.
So these are the ones that have come back to me, attorney?
Yes.
And how many are still waiting to go to the attorney?
We have to meet first with the select.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that is on the first.
They go first, yes.
All right, so we also do that one? Did you go? All right, next one is state of Maine flood plain management ordinance, recommended changes, and this is just what, basically?
This is directly from the state, asking us to include this in our ordinance. They gave us a big, long document with all the kinds of different zones affected by, but here in Svego, the only zones that affect us at all are flood zone A and AE. So we only use the.
I imagine that has something to do with the Northwest River?
A and AE have to do with around the lakes, around the rivers, but not around the oceanfront, for instance, and all those kinds of.
It's in the backyard manual there, bunch of maps that show the flood plains, I think it's right there, you just turned it.
That's true, exactly.
Or whatever, but there should be something that, that shows what's declared to be flood, flood in there, is that in the shoreline zone? I know that around here, there is something.
Yeah.
I.
Basically, that map you looked at shows where the.
I have a problem with the state.
It's like a car or.
I really have a problem with the state.
Okay.
They either have to make up their mind that a dock or a pier is going in the water or over the water. It can't be both.
By rights, they do both.
It's trying to be a smart.
So this, this has some minor changes to it, if you look at it, they've strictly crossed out professional engineers and put in qualified professionals. That was becoming restrictive for people. And it's, the use of engineering judgment has been replaced by standard practices.
And they define qualified professional.
Yeah, I'm really glad that, that that was.
There's a definition for that as well.
I'm really glad to see that in there, because before, what's, who says who's qualified?
And you'll see the zones outlined down below in Q, still in A and AE, and here we have improvement of permanent warfs has shifted a little bit. Then must be designed to be reasonably safe from flooding and non-increased flood risk. And then here's the definition that you were looking for, Jim, on the last page. So a qualified professional means an individual either licensed by the state of Maine or qualified in another manner to perform the specified work in accordance with all applicable design standards and codes, and whose qualifications indicate that the work as designed and as performed will not increase flood risk but of safety. If the qualified professional is not licensed by the state of Maine, the local permitting authority shall request that the qualified professional identify their qualifications in writing. So they've softened the qualifications, essentially. That's that.
That's that. Is there any other business before this workshop?
You have your bylaws, are you all?
We're gonna, we're gonna wait till next meeting. This is a workshop, not a.
Appropriately stressed after all things where we.
Is there any other business?
No.
We done good.
We done good, didn't we? All right, make a motion to close public hearing?
No.
No?
Workshop.
A workshop, excuse me. Ross, I'm still on the public hearing, saying sorry, thank you for correcting me.
Just bang the gap, we're done.
Is there, is there a motion to close the workshop?
Make a motion to close the workshop.
Second?
I mean, one concern, we were all here, we had a consecutive workshop, but the workshops need to be publicized in the same way a planning board meeting is. We might not have done that at this meeting, but we need, if necessary, we need to make sure we do, so.
Yes, and I, and I think Tina did.
I made a motion to.
That's, that's what we did.
What I'm saying is, that's fine, I mean, we schedule it, but it required in the same way as a regular planning board meeting, when the workshop comes up, to publicize it, or is it all right simply to publicize it in the, you know, on the town website?
I think if you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, meet as a board, it should be publicized.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was an oversight, but in the future, we need to make sure we are public,